Hi. I am calling the meeting to order, and if we could stand here for invocation, I'll ask Commissioner Crowley to lead us in indication.
Please pray with me. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for these who are with us and those who are joining us by Zoom meeting. And we ask, Father, for your direction and guidance, understanding of how we are to do things that impact our community in positive ways and protect what we have in our freedoms and our way of life and the quality of things that are here at our county. And so we pray, Father, for safety, for wisdom, for guidance, for understanding, and we thank you for where we live right now. We pray for our finances in our county, that we find ways to replace revenues that have been evaporated and that we would see a clear path to making things become more stable. Jesus' name.
Amen. All right. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Hey, Mr. Beckstead, I can't see you no more.
Well, I'm still here.
Oh, okay.
Can't get rid of that easy.
All right. Recognition of National Association of Counties Gifted Achievement Award. Mr. Stark.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a historic night, historic afternoon for San Juan County. We're adding new hardware to our trophy case, and we have a lot of hardware, as you know, in our trophy case. But this is, San Juan County was recently awarded the National Achievement Award for our Cleanup San Juan Program or Cleanup San Juan App that was developed internally by Sharice Snell, who's our GIS manager, and now is being utilized within the community to help with the reporting of illegal dump sites and ultimately the cleanup that's being done by our Solid Waste Division within Public Works, Matt Basinger and his team. ... time and, I think, $30 in the licensing fee to Apple to develop this in-house. It's being used by our community, and it's having great success in helping to keep our public lands clean. So with that, we don't have the official award. We're not going to receive that for another month or so, but we did receive the email notification that we are a recipient. So I thought it was important that we recognize Sharice for her efforts, the Solid Waste Team, for their efforts in making this program such a success and being recognized on a national level. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and when we do get the award, we will certainly bring that forth for a formal presentation.
All right. Well, who's here? Well, at least come up, both you guys.
And Sharice, it should be online. Hi, Sharice.
Hey, Mike. Hello, Commissioner Fortner.
Hello, Sharice. That's a big deal. I mean, I'm proud of you. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
And 662 sites reported. That's a lot of trash.
Yes, sir.
And I hope, I hope we get some percentage of those who were prosecuted also.
Yes, sir. The Sheriff's Department is issuing citation summonses for those sites.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioners, I obviously want to recognize Sharice for a really advanced development of technology that's helped us combat this issue. And Matt Basinger, our Solid Waste Manager, for allocating resources effectively towards it. It's a priority to Matt. I know it is. He comes in right now, where we obviously have depended on detainee labor for this program, which has been taken away from us by way of this pandemic, but we're still committing at least one day a week to dump site cleanup. We obviously are challenged by staying ahead of folks, where we have one day a week where we can clean up two or three sites and hope that nobody breaks the law two to three days a week on top of that. But Matt's done an amazing job. Sharice has done an amazing job. Proud to be a part of the program. Also, as you might recall, we did get a rate grant for cycling dumping grant from NMED that will offset our disposal cost for that program this year, $205,000. So what we're committing to it is, you know, backs and labor. So we can do that. I think that's, that's good for our community. We can put strong backs cleaning up other people's mistakes.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. All right. That's a cool thing. All right. May I have a motion, Ms. Crowley, so we can go to the order of the campus board? So move. And second, discussion. Those in favor would say aye. Aye. Oppose. It was a unanimous vote, unless I hear otherwise. And I see our clerk walking up here. Everybody protect your noses. Okay.
Chairman and members of the Commission. Of course, my name is Tanya Shelby. I'm your San Juan County Clerk. Despite the pandemic, I am pleased to report the following totals for the June 2nd, 2020 primary election. We had 10,851 absentee voters this time compared to 1,030 for the last presidential election. Early voters, we had 4,075 compared to 3,689 for the last presidential. Election Day, we had 5,802 versus 9,687. We issued 250 provisional ballots. 10 of those were from early voting. 186 of those will be counted. 66 of them are Democrat, 119 are Republican, and one is Libertarian. The 64 that will not be counted were voters that were registered as declined to state a party and could not vote in this election. There was an overall increase of 6,322 voters in this election. I'm extremely proud of San Juan County. Amid the virus, we saw a countywide increase in voter turnout. Contrary to what you may have heard, there was also an increase on the reservation. This shows that voters felt comfortable in voting amid everything that we were, we were up against this time.
How many did you say actually voted on voting day, election day, did you say?
5,802.
On election day?
Yes. We were faced with the magnitude of challenges going into and during this election. The perseverance of all of San Juan County showed, that all of San Juan County showed was by far what made this election a success. I would like to thank the following. First of all, the voters of San Juan County. They exercised their right to vote during all of this pandemic. The poll workers of San Juan County. We are extremely grateful to the workers that still wanted to work this election and that were on the front lines for us. They are truly essential workers. LaCine, the Aztec postmaster. Her and her staff worked with us over the last five weeks to make sure that the voters got their ballots and to make sure that the ballots that we took and delivered to the post office were delivered to the voters. Also, Mike from the Farmington Post Office. We had tremendous support from our, from our local post offices. On election day, we coordinated with every post office in the county, every post office. We picked up ballots that were dropped off from voters that, instead of those ballots being mailed to Albuquerque to come back, we picked those up so that they could be counted.
Otherwise, they wouldn't have been because you wouldn't have received them.
Correct. Those postmasters worked with us.
That's nice.
I would also like to thank all of the facilities that allowed us to use their sites. All the radio stations and the newspapers that helped us get the information out to the voters. And of course, all of our county staff. I'd like to thank Mike Mestes for making sure that we had all of the PPE we needed and assisting us with various situations, and that truly is an understatement. Stuart Logan for also assisting us with the PPE and checking on our sites. Mike Stark for his assistance during some of our challenges. Doug Echols and his staff for the legal support and assistance we needed this time. Devin Neely for providing election information to the voters. Daniel Hill and his crew for getting us all the plexiglass shields that we needed, delivering and picking up all of our voting machines, and, and also his staff for being out there on the front lines during election day. Roberta Padilla and her staff for making sure that all of our early voting workers and our election day workers were entered into munis. Jim Cox and his staff for making sure that the workers get paid and also assisting us with all of our postage, which we had a lot of postage this time, believe me. Diana Chapman and her staff for ordering all the supplies we needed and assisting us with all of our air carts. And Keith from IT for his support leading up to election day and also on election night. And last, but definitely not least, my staff. They put in countless hours. You guys can't even imagine truly what we go through.
Well, we could because I was harassing you regularly, and I would say that things didn't go out. We were so busy that you weren't even able to send things out to six, seven, or eight at night. And that was every day during that process. So I really appreciate the attention you paid to the detail, the work you did, the fact that you didn't mind me bothering you and Tesla Martinez. It was, it was, I mean, 10,000 absentee ballots. That's crazy. Who would have ever thought?
Exactly.
So, I mean, I appreciate what you guys did.
Well, thank you. And we prevailed, you know, thanks to all of San Juan County, my staff. Our election was successful.
Yeah. We didn't have to wait five days to hear the results.
True, Chairman. And I do apologize. I had promised to actually have results out sooner, but you at least got them election night.
Well, I mean, I don't know what sooner means. You got them out as soon as I expected. I'm talking about, I'm glad we didn't wait five days like Santa Fe. So again, I commend you for that, Tanya.
Well, thank you.
That was a great job.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In the last several voting processes, and I've been able to observe what our clerk has done and been on voting days through year after year and to see what the staff does and how it really works well as a well-oiled machine and that the things that come up and things do, they're able to deal with them effectively, efficiently, and quickly. And it just, I mean, I've been there when things have been entered in past elections and so that there's not the kinds of things that we see across the rest of the state, which causes voter confidence to be diminished. We should have a high voter confidence in what our clerk does and, and just, I've witnessed it over and over again, and I just want to say I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Crowley, I do appreciate that, and I, I do have to say that I feel like... Commissioner Crowley, I do appreciate that, and I, I do have to say that I feel like the voter turnout, even in absentee, it's, it's really, truly the voters that trust San Juan County.
Absolutely.
You know, if they didn't trust the process of absentee, they wouldn't have voted that way. And so, I'm honored.
Yeah. Well, you should be.
I guess maybe one other thing, I, I heard some criticism. I didn't agree with it whatsoever because we, as a commission, allowed us to be at a smaller number of locations for voting. We were still in excess of the number required by the state, and some people didn't know that, and were misinformed so as to think that we intentionally wanted to deny, to deny people the opportunity to vote, but that was not the case. It was mostly a matter of being able to staff them, count them, and have any issues, and we did that flying colors. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I stand for any questions.
Master.
Okay. Then may I be excused to go continue canvassing?
Well, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to go out of the canvas board meeting into the indig hospital claims board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second and seconded. All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and I believe that it was unanimous vote unless I hear otherwise. All right. Ms. Lisa Lear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You have before you a list of 154 claims that staff has reviewed for a total of $76,793.96.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and I believe unanimously unless I hear otherwise. All right. Next is consideration of approval of minutes of May 5th, 2020 meeting. May I have another motion approved, moved to approve? And Matt here, second.
Second.
All right. There's a couple of seconds. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I believe the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to move out of H cap board meeting and into regular session.
All right. There's a motion to move from the hospital claims board meeting into the regular meeting. Is it second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. It appears the motion carried unanimously unless I hear otherwise. All right. Now, Mr., we're now in the regular meeting, and I'm going to ask Mr. Echols just for some clarification. Or we go on? Doug, in order for us to continue doing these meetings this way and to not have a roll call, I have to let everyone know that we believe it's unanimous unless otherwise heard. Is that proper? Is that correct?
And give anyone who is opposed the opportunity to state it so their names can be in the mentions.
Right. So even though I sound like a broken record, it's, it's a legal broken record. Is that fair to say?
And it's much faster than a roll call.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. All right. We are now approval of agenda. Mr. Stark.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we do have one change tonight upon request of the developer associated with new business item number one, as Mr. Harper's requested a little more time to have that item considered. He does recognize that San Juan County has done our part in terms of having the public hearing associated with review of that subdivision in a timely manner per state law, but would like to defer that item. He was hoping to do it at the second meeting in June, but as you know, we don't have a second meeting in June scheduled, and so he's agreeable to July 7th to have that item heard. So we would remove, with your consent, remove that item from, from the agenda tonight.
May, is there any objection? No. There's no objection. That's what we'll do next meeting. Okay.
You'd take a vote on approval of this agenda?
All right. So there's, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Those in, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. There's no opposition, and the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise. All right. There's a consent agenda, and there are 11 things on the consent agenda. Number one is a consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes for May 19th, 2020. Consideration of approval of special meeting minutes for May 5th, 2020. Number three is the consideration of approval of the treasurer check register for May 2020. Number four is consideration of approval of finance check registers for May 2020. Number five is consideration of approval of budget adjustment, number 11, resolution number 19-20-66. Number six is consideration for renewal of proposal number 18-1915, medical direction for fire and rescue services to EMS DOC, SPC of Farmington. Number seven is consideration for renewal proposal number 18-1916, fire support services to FARCO LLC of Aztec. Number eight is consideration of renewal proposal number 16-1709, which is the comprehensive inmate medical, mental health, and pharmaceutical care to Wellpath LLC. Number nine, excuse me, is consideration of renewal of bid 17-1824, the price agreement for the purchase of warehouse supplies to various vendors. Number 10 is consideration of DWI grant agreement, number 21-D-G24, with DFA/LGD. Who's LGD?
Local Government Division.
For operation of the local DVI program. And 11, consideration of approval for the fiscal year 2021, DVI planning council membership. Finally, 12, consideration for new county managers employment agreement. That is on the consent agenda. Before we vote, is there anybody that has any questions about the consent agenda? There being none, because there's no discussion on our motion to approve the consent agenda, I'll ask for a motion from Mr. Crowley. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It appears it was unanimous unless I hear otherwise from some objection. Okay. That gets us to new business. Mind your new business. Number, number two, consideration of approval of resolutions, number 19-2063, 19-2065, supporting the New Mexico Department of Transportation 2021, local government road fund award participation. Mr. Perrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, here and out in the ether. Before you is, for your consideration is approval of, as Mr. Chair had said, resolutions 19, 20, 63, 64, and 65. These are in support of awards we've received from New Mexico DOT for participation in 2020, 2021, local government road fund or LGRF program. We'd requested in total 462,000 against the three programs. We're awarded roughly 422,000 amongst the three programs. So 40,000 less than requested. Fortunately, we do build some contingency into those, those applications, so I do believe all the improvements as are outlined in your package will, will be accomplished with the awards as funded. I think it is worth noting that these are state general fund dollars, so we haven't yet seen a major impact by the COVID-19 economic crisis in this particular award. So what, what the purpose of this award, these resolutions are, are to commit to the 25% match to the program, which in total is $105,450. You will see, again, in probably September, the agreement item on the agenda, which will execute these agreements, but in order for them to generate the agreements, we need to match. So that is the purpose of the resolutions placed in front of you, and with that said, I would stand for any questions and request approval of resolution 19, 20, 63, 64, and 65.
Questions, comments from anybody? Mr. Perrell. There being none, may I have a motion approved? Moved to approve? May I have a second? All right. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. There's, there's none, and the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise. All right. That takes us to item number three, consideration of approval of modifications to San Juan County solid waste operational hours. Mr. Perrell.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, and before you is a package that contains a proposal to modify operational hours at San Juan County transport stations. We bring this to you as a result of vacancies within the solid waste department and a desire to bring the solid waste budget more in line with revenues that are generated by the environmental fund, which, as you are aware, is a 1/8 percentage of GRT. So as, as current, we have two vacancies, or one existing vacancy, vacancy in the transfer station attendant position, and another pending, a resignation that was, that was given to us a couple of weeks ago. So it seemed, again, try to close the gap between GRT revenues and what's collected at stations and what's being funded by the general fund. So the first page of your summary, and I'm sorry, I don't, digital media in front of me, so I'm going to flick to Devin when we change it, and hopefully we stay with each other. But the first page, again, is a program summary. San Juan County Solid Waste is Division of Public Works. It's budgeted independently by the 202 fund. Again, I mentioned that's, that's funded largely by an increment in GRT. 28 full-time staff in that division, administrative technician, truck driver, and attendant. We do operate 12 transfer station facilities without the county, and we are also responsible for licensing and reporting of county facilities to NMED. Next page on that are our existing operation days. I won't jump into each one of them, but you can see on the high end, on Fridays and Saturdays, we currently operate all stations with the exception of two, so 11 out of 12 on Fridays and Saturdays. On the low end is Monday where we operate six of our 12 stations. Current fee structure, which was approved, I think, last August by you all, $1 apiece for 33 gallon bags of trash, two bags, half load, up to one and a half cubic yards is five bucks. Up to three cubic yards will be $9. Still accept metal and appliances free of charge. So the modification of transfer station operational days, so again, I'd mentioned we do have one existing and one pending vacancy in transfer station attendant personnel. We intend to align this program with the budget need as best we can using attrition. I'll lay that out to you a little, little further in this presentation, but again, these modifications that I presented do not include layoffs or furloughs. So this next page is, is the proposal that, that we're requesting you consider. At Cedar Hill, our current operations are Thursday through Sunday, Thursday through Sunday. We are requesting you consider changing those operational days to Friday and Saturday only. At the Blanco transfer station, currently Thursday through Monday, requesting you consider a Sunday through Monday schedule. I'm sorry, that should read Thursday through Sunday as opposed to Thursday through Monday, but we are proposing a two-day week instead of a four-day week. At the La Plata transfer station, existing operations are Friday through Monday, proposing a Saturday, Sunday operation. At Hilltop transfer station, current operations are Sunday through Monday, proposing Sunday only. At the Huayno transfer station, current operations are Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday, proposing a Saturday-only operation. And at Waterflow, operations are currently Wednesday through Saturday, proposing a Thursday through Saturday operation. No operational changes are proposed at Shiprock, Kirtland, Lee Acres, Sand Springs, Lake Valley, and Upper Fruitland. I think, as you all know, Shiprock, Sand Springs, and Upper Fruitland are operated under contract between Navajo Nation. That contract would need to be revised if we were going to make changes to those. So the next slide shows what we're proposing in terms of operational days. Big days were Fridays and Saturdays, going from 11 days on Fridays to nine days on Saturdays, going from 11 days to 10 days on Mondays, which was our lowest volume day, going to four days. And I can, I'll get into the specific changes a little bit later in terms of quantity. So again, I'd mentioned that no operational changes were proposed for those stations under contract with Navajo Nation. Those that we are proposing, we do have some considerations to make. Those are customer visits, i.e. wait time. Solid waste volume, which we are limited by Mexico Environment Department in terms of what we can accept on any given day, that is 240 cubic yards. And revenues, obviously trying to maximize the time spent where we have an employee manning a station to generate the most revenue to fund this account. And I will also note that we have paid particular attention in this proposal of changes to maintain one day of weekend service at each station. Obviously, folks generally don't work on weekends. We want to make sure they can take care of the trash on those days, and that has been accomplished with the schedule we're providing. So the other thing to consider that's not in the proposal is, you know, we obviously have staff, and we have to slot these staff into available positions, and we want to give them a desirable work schedule where they don't work one day, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, or something like that. So we try to make operations align with the staff we have on hand as well as align with the public. So I think we've accomplished that. We don't have gaps in staff oversight, so everybody's working a straight schedule. So the next slide that you'll see is customer visits. And you can see there's a significant disparity amongst our stations in what is busy and what is not. So you can see that Kirtland, Shiprock, and Shiprock is our busiest station. We see upwards of, or close to 180 customers a day on average. Kirtland not far different than that. Next busiest station would typically be the Acres for our current schedule, but, you know, Waterflow's right there, too. So if, you know, if I were a businessman, I would want to see all stations, you know, aligned in terms of customer visits on any given day. Obviously, we're not businessmen. We are government employees that are providing a service, but we also need to be mindful of where the money comes from, which is our taxpayers. So trying to align service to need is what we're trying to accomplish with this. Next slide is solid waste volume, very similar to customer visits. I mean, it's directly correlated. Again, busier stations, you see the higher volumes. But you'll also see, again, on the previous slide, too, is if we were to make these changes that I had previously proposed, we start bumping up volumes on any given day, but they're still well below our capacity. Again, our, you know, look at Kirtland in terms of capacity, what we can handle with one employee versus what we're handling at Hilltop, Huayno, Lake Valley, La Plata, or Blanco on any given day. Our staff is underutilized, so we're looking to, again, equalize, equalize personnel and collections. Last slide is revenues, again, same, same trends. The, the left column, if you will, is existing versus what is predicted, and trying to normalize that curve across all stations to make sure we're maximizing staff and revenue. I know there's potentially some concern of, you know, if we're going to close these stations on given days, what's the impact versus? So the next slide is a daily traffic summary. These, these are all summarized January through April of this year. So again, it's, it's not a complete data set, but as I've looked So, again, it's not a complete data set, but as I've looked at it, it's fairly normalized in that it doesn't seem to change too much from month to month. So, at Blanco, the days where we're suggesting closure, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, are all below the weekly average of 26 visitors. And Sunday is the busiest day at Blanco, and then, again, opening on Monday. Cedar Hill, this one's a little bit different. This is the only station. Again, we're trying to manage staff. Two ideas, you'd have a staff member that will manage both Blanco and Cedar Hill. Sunday, Monday at Blanco, and Saturday, Friday at Cedar Hill. So, currently, the busiest day at Cedar Hill is 100, roughly 100 customers per day versus a weekly average of 56. Again, that's not an inordinate amount of people when you compare it to some of our busier stations, but it is a busier day, so I think folks will have to adjust to a Friday, Saturday schedule, whereas Sunday might be their weekend. And they've done their groceries, they've packed up their trash, and they'll get ready for the week, so that will be a change. At Hilltop, you can see the volumes are very low in terms of customer visits. Average on Sundays, 25 people. Average on Mondays, 18 people. No reason we can't accommodate those folks on a single day. We're proposing Sundays. At Huelfino, again, same, very, very low volumes, averaging 23 persons a day. Peak day is Saturday, proposing to keep the peak day Saturday open. At La Plata, same trends. Weekends are busy, weekdays not so much. So, instead of being open Sunday, Monday, Friday, Saturday, just staying open for Saturday, Sunday, folks will have to dispose at that station on the weekends, or, again, we have Kirtland open or other stations seven days a week. At Waterflow, similar story, open four days a week, Wednesday through Saturday, proposing closing Wednesdays. Some degree, managing staff allotment, assigning that person that was at Waterflow on Wednesdays to another station to accommodate a vacancy. But again, I think you can see we're well below our capacity at all our stations. So, the bottom line, again, why we're bringing this to you, is the potential to eliminate two permanent staff and unemployment metrics. Working with HR and finance, potential for that employee at step 21, so a new hire, someone that would elect to full-family benefits would be roughly $44,000 for each, so roughly $88,000 for each, or per the elimination of those positions. Again, bringing us much closer, or bringing us closer to reducing that general fund subsidy. Again, right now, it's predicted at $368,000. Suspecting, once GRT numbers come in, that subsidy's going to increase, so trying to do the best we can, maybe $368,000 doesn't change even with this reduction, but hoping to not make it, you know, a greater commitment if we continue to operate the program as it is. And I will say, you know, I know I brought in front of you in the past year three solid waste program changes, one being rate changes, one being recycling program changes, now this one being operational day changes. And the reality is, is we're going to try to continue to streamline this program with your approval to get closer and closer to that, you know, being in line with the revenues that are being generated by that environmental fund. And, you know, as well as being mindful to the need of our citizens to get rid of their solid waste, because if we don't, we end up pumping more money into a wilderness cleanup program that we got a reason to word for. So, with all that said, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would stand for any questions. I'm assuming you might have some, and we do need to report any changes that might be made to Mexico ED that takes roughly 30 days. So, I would suspect these changes would be ready to be filed in July.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Nick and Mike, have you guys talked to a matter around the warping all and out in that area as far as the chapter presidents and stuff go?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman, or Commissioner Sullivan. I did, I spoke with Urban Chavez, who was the chapter president of the
Nagizi.
Nagizi Chapter. And his suggestion was, try it out. If these changes don't work, if there's a significant amount of complaints, we can always change things back. I mean, nothing's, you know, cast in stone, but, yeah, I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Chavez last week, and he understands the budget struggles he's dealing with. And he was
I appreciate you guys making an effort anyway to talk to them, and I guess, are you ready for a motion, or do you need a motion, Jack?
We'll go ahead, make the motion, and we'll go continue discussion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we accept these changes and go from there, and if it doesn't work, we can always go back.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, now discussion. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Crowley.
I have to say, I take my hat off to staff for watching how to man our budget and look at ways that we can make changes. When we look at this, it's over 50% reduction in the subsidy that has to go to take care of our waste. And so, that's really important, particularly right now as we're looking, and so thank you for working hard on that, and we are still maintaining the service, and that's the important people, the part that people need to hear. We have the service. We have cut the subsidy out of our budget so that we're not ending up cutting other things in our budget that are services to our people.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perel, could we, if this does pass, can we make sure that we set up a system that tracks any complaints to the times that we've, in days that we've cut, to ensure that we keep track of that, so if we do have to come back, look at it, and change things again?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Beckstead, we do obviously keep a phone log of any citizen complaints that we get, and we try to address them as best we can. My gut is, we'll see some concern over, you know, a month or so period of time, and then folks will kind of adjust their week-to-week solid waste needs, but absolutely, if there is a public outcry for something, I will be happy to bring that back to you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries, and I believe unanimously, unless I hear any objection, otherwise. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, while I have the floor before I have to go put a mask on and socially isolate myself, I wanted to give you all an update on the bridge on 5500. So, today, right now, I think I've mentioned, we have eight property owners we need to acquire property from. Six of those eight have signed agreements to proceed with acquisition, still in continued discussion with the remaining two parties, and we do have our approval from the Army Corps of Engineers for endangered species work, which was a big hurdle, so we are forging honor and look forward to bringing in front of you a recommendation to the ward, hopefully before it's too long.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that gets us to item number four under new business. Consideration of Amendment Restatement of the San Juan County Employee Handbook Ordinance Number 34. Mr. Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you today for final consideration is the amended restatement of our Personnel Handbook Ordinance Number 34. Because it is an ordinance, if you would, go ahead and convene the public hearing, and then I'll make my remarks, and we'll see if there are any other remarks.
All right. Again, follow the recommendation of council, because we are concerning amendment to an ordinance, I hereby declare us to be in having a public hearing, and I will take any public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just kick it off by pointing out, you approved a notice of intention on May 5th. We published the notice on May 10th in the Farmington Daily Times more than 14 days prior to today's hearing. Every time the manager, whomever it may be, says it's time to look at the employment handbook, I personally cringe. I've made a vow to myself that, God willing, this is the last one of these I ever have to do. And I say that because we don't just sit in the office in one meeting and decide what changes need to be made and bring them to you. We had probably eight meetings among the manager, the legal department, HR, and the finance department just to come up with our first draft. Then, once we got a good draft, we did a summary of changes, put that and the proposed ordinance on the internet, passed them out to department heads, and invited employees to make comment on the changes that were made. We had a few comments that were made. Most of them were really good comments and were things that we accommodated based upon what they said. Obviously, you're always going to get a few comments, "I need more money and less work" kind of thing, but that's okay. I don't know, I'll be happy to go through these item by item if you like, but they've been here, and I think they're fairly self-explanatory.
Mr. Echols, the only question I really have is under section 5.3.2.
Okay.
At the bottom of that page, it says, "If an employee cannot arrange for care of the children, employee must contact the department head or elected official." I read that to mean that an employee, any employee, if they can't reach the department head, could call me or Mr. Crowley.
Well, I think it means the elected official, like the clerk or the treasurer to let them know they couldn't do it. At least, that's what they'll be told in orientation. It hasn't been too big of a problem, but we sort of put that in as a go-along with the provision in the new COVID legislation that gave some additional time off. Obviously, we just can't have a situation where people are trying to work and do daycare at the same time.
So, if you needed a time off, can't make it, you can't call me.
That's right.
Yeah, I think you put that into, you could have your name in there, call you.
Actually, after the first, you'll ask them to call your wife.
All right, any other questions? Let's see, we're still in public hearing, right?
Like, the other comment I want to make is, we did this with an emergency clause because we were worried about clearing up some things with when vacation is forfeited. However, because of COVID, the county manager administratively determined that forfeiture this year only would not occur until the end of September, because, as you recall, for a while, all vacations were canceled because we didn't know what we were going to need. So, if it's approved, I would ask that you remove the emergency clause. That frankly gives staff a little longer to prepare copies and educate employees as to what changes are there.
I believe there's Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, what drove this to redo these? I know that you're just trying to bring everything up to date, but what happened?
Nothing. We do this probably every two, two-and-a-half years because there are changes in federal law and state law that we need to come through and fix, and what we discover is that there are areas that we didn't have in the handbook that ought to be covered. So, there was no one particular event that drove it. Just the fact that the manager and the HR department don't like me.
Okay. You ready for a motion, Mr. Porter?
No, we're still in public hearing, not yet. Mr. Echols?
I have nothing for them.
All right. I would like to, do I need a motion to go out of the public hearing?
No.
All right, so I'm going to declare at this point, we are out of the public hearing and back to just the regular meeting. Now, at this point, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve consideration of amendment reinstatement of San Juan County's Employee Handbook Ordinance Number 34.
All right, second. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that he amend his motion and indicate that it's without the emergency clause?
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment? Mr. Sullivan?
Do I?
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment to delete the emergency clause?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Crowley, do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
All right, any other discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is no objection unless I hear otherwise, and it's unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Sullivan, I think I can flush in the toilet. Oh, Low Jean, okay. All right. Number five, consideration of second amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the town of Kirtland and San Juan County for fire, police, and road maintenance services. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In 2015, the county and the town of Kirtland signed a memorandum of understanding for police, fire, and road maintenance services. This second amendment changes the MOU in the following ways. It will renew automatically each year going forward, each year unless it's terminated, and there's a 90-day termination provision if either party wants to terminate the agreement. Each year, there'll be a CPI increase for road maintenance services, and also, under the MOU, Kirtland pays the salaries of the deputy and records technician, and the amendment provides that the county law enforcement salaries go up, these amounts will go up at the same rate. Number three, the rate for fire and emergency services changes to a flat rate of $60,000 per year. I was on a per-call basis previously. Number four, an administrative fee of 10% will be added to each quarterly invoice, and the, this MOU has already been signed by the mayor of Kirtland. And staff requests that the commission approve the second amendment to the MOU between the town of Kirtland and the county.
All right, any questions?
Mr. Beckstead.
Yes, sir.
Just for informational, or for information, I have to recuse out of discussion and voting on this matter.
All right. Any other discussion? There are me and none, may I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I've moved to approve the second amendment of the MOU between the town of Kirtland and San Juan County.
Mr. Sullivan, or Low Jean, is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Second.
All right, any other discussions? It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? There will be none, those in favor say aye.
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 All right, those oppose? It appears it is unanimous with noting that Commissioner Beckstead has recused himself from this vote. All right. That gets us to item number six. Consideration of Approval to Submit an Economic Development Administration Cares Act Grant. Mr. Philrup.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The Federal Cares Act, among many of its parts, allocates $1.5 billion for economic development assistance to the Economic Development Administration to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, and respond to the economic impacts of the coronavirus. And in reviewing project needs and those that would be related to the purposes of the Cares Act, funds that are available to counties and other agencies, county presents to you three projects within one application that would be made by the county to the EDA. Installation of a generator at McKee Parks Convention Center. That facility serves as emergency housing and emergency care site, so backup power is needed there during response, as well as other times during the facility's operation. operation. As well, Sheriff's Office backup energy generator, that location for continuity of operations during response. San Juan Regional Medical Center building fiber and other internet, telecommunication infrastructure at that facility. To amend what's been presented to you, today, staff had a call with a representative from the EDA Albuquerque office who indicated that, in fact, an application with asking for more funds would be an improvement on the county's application. So we want to amend this to encompass the entire amount that San Juan Regional Medical Center had initially stated. That would be $1.6 million instead of $650,000. Therefore, the total amount of the application would be $1.9 billion. And to move on to the impact from matching funds, the match for the telehealth and internet infrastructure at San Juan Regional Medical Center, the match there would be $320,000 instead of what's shown in your agenda. And then, on the two generators, $62,000 of matching funds if this application is successful. Staff recommends submission of this and approval by the commission. I stand for questions, Mr. Chair.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, the $320,000 is a match from the hospital?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, correct.
Okay. The 62 times 2,000 is from county through our law enforcement leave there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, $62,000 would be times one.
Times one, okay.
That would cover the match for both of those. The program is an 80/20. There's a possibility of 100%, up to 100% grant. So that would be $62,000 total for those two items.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, just for your information, that $62,200 is already budgeted in next year's fiscal year budget, and so it actually would be a net savings too, is if we, relative to the amount that we had budgeted for the Sheriff's Office generator in the budget.
I remembered our discussion with that a couple of times, so thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Philrup. I'm just kidding you. Any other discussion? None. All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It appears that the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise.
We could probably recuse John.
All right, next is item number seven. Consideration for approval to submit a reach, intervene, support, and engage grant application to New Mexico Behavioral Health Collaborative. Ms. Hodgman, how are you doing today?
I'm excellent. I'm glad to be here. Happy to see everybody.
Indeed.
So thank you for allowing me to come and present this to you. So this RISE grant is a second invitation the counties had to apply for these funds. The first one was the IDP Intervention.
Demonstration.
Demonstration project. And this RISE grant will allow us at Alternative, not Alternative, where am I? Adult Detention Center to continue working with the top 50 friendly faces, familiar faces.
Frequent flyers.
Utilizers, frequent flyers, however we want to put it, in applying more substance abuse, behavioral health, counseling, and groups within the facility, and also allow us to connect with the managed care organizations to ensure that those 50 inmate or detainees departing have case management and connections to behavioral health, healthcare, housing, all the specific needs to hopefully help them get on a different track and not return. So this will allow us to do this again this year. And a little more intensive behavioral health treatment in the center itself. And there are no matching dollars requirement on this. Adult Detention Center will be required to hire a new staff position, which will be called the Transitional Navigator or the Transitional Coordinator. This will replace all the work that Deputy Administrator Cook had to do last year to organize and coordinate.
And it'll be paid out of this grant?
Yes, it will be paid directly out of this grant. They will also hire another detention officer to help with all the movement and the supervision that has to happen during the meetings and the groups also. Let's see, we will contract with another agency for detention-based mental health services. Currently, Well Path is doing that, and they have submitted a budget for that, which we've included in that. Sue Hodgson, I will act as the grant manager, and I will liaison between the MCOs to ensure that all of the detainees that have voluntarily participated in this agreement are getting their needs met and coordinating, collaborating. And I'll hold monthly meetings with the MCOs and with the Detention Center to make sure that we're doing this, collecting the correct data that we need to. And there'll be a requirement of quarterly meetings in Santa Fe, which the grant manager and personnel from ADC will attend to that one as well. And the due date for this is June 12. So I stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I think it's time for us to kind of toot our horn because this has been a project we've been working on, and it's been ongoing, but it's to fill some of the gap that we saw in our gap analysis with regard to mental health. And that initiative that we brought forth, when I brought the stepping up initiative to us, we were able to secure the $493,000 grant that we're working off right now. And we would not have had that if it wasn't for the stepping up initiative. And they've seen our success and are willing to continue funding us. And it's part of one portion of meeting the gaps. And so we have some of what I call just frequent flyers that have been there before who fall through the cracks without someone to help track what's going on in their lives, to get them to doctors, to remind them of their appointments, to make sure they have medications, and to help, just assist them to stay on top of mental health issues that tend to use the time of our law enforcement. And so I'm anxious that we will be launching off some kind of an event in the near future. And we, people don't know, we haven't got a date exactly set, but we're working on that so that we can invite the public to be involved in that at some level, and that we can begin to widen the scope of this because we have people outside of law enforcement and detention centers and elsewhere within the public who need help, and we are trying to cover that gap in a way that's beneficial to our whole society. So thank you for your part.
Thank you for allowing me. I've enjoyed it.
Thank you, Commissioner Crowley. Any other discussion? There being none, may I have a motion? Moved to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Do you notice how Sue referred to herself in the third person like they did on Seinfeld? It was interesting, I like that.
All right, then I can blame it if it goes wrong.
All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries unanimously unless I hear objection otherwise. All right, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now Jack Fortner sends his report to the county manager.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You know, just to add to what Commissioner Crowley just said, that, you know, our initiative has been noticed. We've actually received recognition from the state. We're obviously receiving these funding opportunities from the state. Well, hold on to this one here, hold on to your seats. Here's an interesting opportunity that was presented to us yesterday, and we're going to be actively pursuing this. I received an email from the New Mexico Behavioral Health Collaboration, which was created in 2004, and it was to assist counties that were dealing with serious mental health, substance abuse services and issues, opportunities to, through funding, through collaboration, through technical assistance to provide services directly to those communities. And what was created were behavioral health investment zones. In 2016, ultimately, that included Rio, Reba, and McKinley County initially. Both of those counties are now, I guess, graduating from the program. It's been five years, and they're moving on. They've obviously put, I think, good programs in place that are benefiting their citizens, and now that leaves funding opportunities available for two more counties. So heard yesterday that we have been asked by the state Behavioral Health Services Department to apply for this funding, and this is significant. If we are successful, year one will receive $250,000, followed by $500,000 each year for the next four years. So we're talking a total of $2.25 million over the next five years that the state is asking us to apply for. And of course, they're aware of our behavioral health gap analysis and that we've got a plan that we can use to provide us a roadmap on the services that are most needed in our community, specific to those programs that are not today reimbursed by Medicaid or other forms of reimbursement. And so between myself and primarily Ms. Hodgman, we'll be working on putting that application together. Of course, in classic state fashion, we need to get the application in by June 29th. And so we'll be actively working on getting that done. We won't have an opportunity to formally bring that grant application to the commission, but we will bring that to you at the July 7th meeting to have you all ratify the application that we put forth and the programs and services contained within. So that's exciting news, and I think, once again, another feather in the cap for this commission who have really pushed that behavioral health initiative forward, and now we're being rewarded with dollars to improve services. Update on the McGee Park drive-in. As you know, we've been, we worked with Allen Theaters on putting together a drive-in movie theater at McGee Park, and kudos to all the staff that have participated on our end to make that work, get that ready in such a quick fashion, and to Allen Theaters. They've had great success. They've had sellout nights Saturday, Sunday, and, sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Unfortunately, the very first night, they had some technical issues and had to refund those that were in attendance, but since then, they've had no technical issues, you know. It's been 20-plus years since they've operated a drive-in theater, so figured they'd have a few bugs to work out. But it's been well-received by the community, and we're happy to be participating in that and providing that opportunity to the community at this time. Our interim budget was accepted and approved by the Department of Finance and Administration at the state level, and so that's important. That happened in a fairly, fairly quick manner, and so that is ready for interim use. And then, of course, we'll be working between now and July when we have our next budget meeting. Of course, we're anxiously awaiting what gross receipts tax revenues will look like. The first month, reflecting March activity, wasn't bad. Real telltale sign is going to be here in about nine days when we receive, or actually less than that, probably six days when we receive the report for April activities. So of course, I'll get that out to you as soon as we have those numbers, and that will be a topic of discussion at our next commission meeting, as I promised to you I'd bring forth every commission meeting. I just have one other item, and I'd like to, as we've done for every commission meeting, going back to March when the COVID-19 pandemic broke out, is to have our emergency manager, Mike Mestas, who I believe is on the line, to have him give us an update on the external response to the community and activities to date. I see you, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Stark. Thank you. Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission coming to you from the O.C. today. I hope all is well. Here's my COVID report for June 9, 2020. Today is actually day 103 for me in San Juan County's emergency response to COVID-19. A milestone for me today, today, I've written sit rep number 80 to the state of New Mexico. We've also reached, short of a milestone of 1,999 positives in San Juan County, and sadly, we've reached 134 deaths today, with just one being reported. Items and issues continue to come into our ELC. Obviously, PPE requests come in, and the community need requests continue to come in. The great thing with our community today, we received a PPE N95 donation from the United Methodist Church of Aztec, and we've also received N95s from Sunglass of Farmington last week. So again, I can't continue to stress how much our community has come together and helped me do my job. I couldn't do it without them. Some items of note for you, San Juan Regional has stopped their COVID testing and diverted all that testing to Department of Health, who is continuing to do it weekly, almost five days a week. Numbers were low Friday, as you well know, seven, but they were moderate through the weekend at 37 and 44. But good news today, commission, only nine positives in San Juan County today, and relatively only 14 positives in McKinley County, so hopefully, there's a trend there. We continue with daily duties, and we wait to see what the governor has to give us on June 30th. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, and then defer back to our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mestas. Any comments or questions for him? Okay.
I complete my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. That gets us to reports from elected officials and department heads. Please come forward, and for the record, identify who speak.
Thank you, Chairman. My name's Fran Philip, County Administrative Officer. I wanted to give you a report about the fact that the Harvest Gold subdivision water system replacement has reached substantial completion. The contractor let me know by email the day they've got one more item to do on their punch list, so they should be done this week, according to him. You'll recall, that's 140-lot subdivision east of Bloomfield city limits that the county cooperated with the state, the state, and was able to supply the funds through New Mexico Environment Department. But that's a big benefit, obviously, to the citizens, residents of that neighborhood to have that new system put in place, and so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you. Aye.
And I apologize, Mr. Chairman. What I meant also to add is that once we're able to have gatherings again, we would like to hold a ribbon-carry ceremony to acknowledge the effort.
Yeah, we've been following that kind of energy, and I have.
My daughter wrote a paper on it.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Mr. Tanner, were you gonna? No, okay. All right, again, we're still under elected officials, department heads. I wanted to say a few things. One, because I feel the urge and the need, and two, because I've been asked to comment on a number of things. One was regarding the swastika that was at a protest rally. And we have to understand what the swastika stands for to understand people's hurt and objection. Represents a time period where America initially failed to act. Represents a time period of hate, of a horrible time in our world's past. It stands for evil. People were tortured and died by the people who loved the swastika. It's particularly offensive, not just to our Jewish friends, but to many people, many minorities and non-minorities. It did not represent our community. I would then tell you that there was a picture with Sheriff Favreino that had the, had it in the background. And let me tell you something. Sheriff Favreino was, not Favreino, Ferrari, sorry. Sheriff Ferrari was simply standing somewhere, being interviewed. Wasn't standing for the flag, nor was he standing for what it represented. He was wrongly associated with that evil symbol, and in no way or shape or form does our sheriff stand for that hate. And then, I want to comment about the issue involving George Floyd. Number one, I would tell you that Black Lives Matter. They matter to us. They matter to me. They matter to my family. And they matter to God in heaven. Their lives have been historically marginalized, and the Floyd incident brings up past hurts. Number two, we all should fight for good. There are some during this process who don't see the value of good, of human life, or of diversity. We cannot sit back and watch injustice and say nothing. There is a battle between good and evil, and in the end, good wins. But in the meantime, we must speak up. But in the meantime, we must speak up for good. Then I would tell you that violence is not the answer, but we must note that there is a difference between rioters and protesters. Protesters were those people that are, that were in Farmington at four different times. Rioters were those people in different parts of the country that did damage. We want change because we dislike the past for those people who are hurt from racism or hurt from damage to the property. Change is possible, that it starts here, and it starts in our community. We have to ask ourselves, who needs to change first? And I believe that's all of us as we speak out. When injustice happens from or by someone who has sworn to protect us, it's particularly sad and particularly scary. I would remind you of Proverbs 31:8 that says, "Anyone cannot speak for themselves, then we must speak up for them." And then it goes on to mention the poor, the needy. It's our obligation to not stand silent, and that's why I'm saying this now. And finally, I would say, our sheriff's office is unlike any other. They're led by godly men who want to do good and right for our community, and I support them. All right. Any other reports or from elected officials and department heads?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to echo with regard to our own sheriff's department. People don't understand as a commissioner that we see things that have happened across our county, and over and over again, our sheriff's department is proven that they are of, are exemplary, and that their record is great, and that we, as commissioners, have the opportunity to have attended many of the annual banquets that sheriffs have had, where they actually show what our deputies have done in the field, and they're outstanding, and they're to be commended. I am glad that I live here, I'm glad that we're not faced with looting and rioting and people whose businesses are just torn apart. I'm thankful that we have a sheriff who's willing to stand up in our community and allow people to have a free voice, to speak their mind, and to protect us from, for, protect us to have peaceful assembly. And that's what he's done in the last four things that have transpired in, in Farmington. So I commend our sheriff and our department. Many of the deputies, we individually know from time to time, having visited with them and seen them in the field, and they are to be commended, and I thank them.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports from elected officials or department heads? It appears there is none. We now forehave comment. I'm sorry, Mr.
No. I did not. No problem at all. I'm hard, I'm, I'm pretty easy to miss.
All right.
Chairman and Commissioners, those of you who joined us here in person today, you may not have been able to park in your favorite parking spot, because there's a giant bus in our parking lot. They are collecting blood from the San Juan County employees and some other folks that volunteered to give blood. I can report to you that 22 people gave blood today, and all the appointments to give blood today were filled up in a matter of hours, so we have a second blood drive scheduled for June the 23rd from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you would like to get on the schedule, we can certainly send you that information if you like. The folks at Vitalant, which is formerly.
United Blood Services.
Thank you. United Blood Services are also providing coronavirus antibody testing when you donate blood, and so if that's something you're interested in, we can certainly set you up with them to give blood and get tested if you so desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. I assume you already gave.
I gave it.
Okay. All right. Every day. All right. That gets us to.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I just wanted to thank Mike Stark. He came out there to Northern Navajo Medical Center, and we delivered breakfast burritos to the staff there, so we had a great time meeting all the people there, and some of them are my former students who are now in the medical field. So I appreciate representing you at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That gets us to, I believe, comments and input from the general public. Limited to three minutes per person on subject the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. Well, formal action will be taken at this meeting, which relates to comments or input from the general public. And you have three minutes. Do we have any that were submitted by hand-delivered, or mailed, or faxed, or emailed?
Mr. Chairman, we did not.
All right. There being no comment from the general public, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
So moved.
All right. Moved in second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It appears it was unanimous vote to adjourn unless I hear otherwise. We are adjourned.